Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. And before we kick off tonight, we have a few events we would like to engage in. And a couple of them are proclamations. And I have one tonight that is one that is well deserved. It's something that an organization in our community has done for many, many years. And I know all the young people that are here today have seen this vehicle. So I would like Jason Dennis and Chief Rita to join me up here if you don't mind. I'm going to read this proclamation. And Jason, thanks for being here.
You're welcome.
Whereas the Beaver Creek Police Department has been teaching the DARE program, Drug Abuse Resistance Education, to our young people since 1987, educating them in ways of resisting peer pressure, experimenting with drugs, alcohol, and joining gangs. And whereas Dave Dennis Chrysler Dodge Jeep has provided vehicles for the past 20 years to the Beaver Creek Police Department for the DARE program. I'm sure you've all seen those DARE Jeeps around. This year's is a beautiful example. And whereas Dave Dennis Chrysler Dodge Jeep wishes to help draw attention to DARE by giving the Beaver Creek Police Department vehicles that stand out in the community and provide positive visibility to the anti-drug program. And whereas the vehicle is used on a daily basis by the DARE officer, parked for visibility at the schools, used in school functions, parades, open houses, safety programs, and DARE events. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, along with the entire city council, do hereby extend our gratitude and appreciation towards Jason Dennis of Dave Dennis Chrysler Dodge Jeep. Jason, thank you very much.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to ask Chief if he has a word. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council and Vice Mayor. We just thank you for this opportunity because it is a longstanding relationship we have in our community here with our, we make with our stakeholders, and one of them's Dave Dennis. And we just thank Jason for this donation that we get to use for a few years and give back. And it's just, the DARE officers just truly enjoy it, and it's a great thing to see out there. It's in the parades when we're able to get back to doing those. So we do thank you very much, Jason.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Jason, floor is yours.
Oh, I just, I want to thank the council. I want to thank Beaver Creek. So I'm a small business owner in Beaver Creek. It's a pleasure. I mean, it is, I've been there 25 years, maybe 27 years, I'm not real sure. But I'm a second generation too, so I, you know, you guys probably, I'm sure you talked to a lot of business owners. But it has absolutely been a pleasure, the whole time I've been here, watching Beaver Creek grow, having a successful business because of Beaver Creek. So I just want to thank everybody here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you. And coincidentally, today is the International Day of Women. And so that being said, I'd like to invite our two councilwomen to join me down here as we honor the Girl Scouts. All right, would you all like to come up here, please, and join us? We have pens back here, two for, when it's time. Well, you know, in the spirit of honoring women, the Girl Scouts are where the leaders are developed for tomorrow, from the side of the women's standpoint. And it's a, it's an organization that is, just an outstanding. I mean, it's a, I always enjoy going to Gold Awards when I can, the progress that these young ladies make as they go through the ranks. So I want to read a proclamation this evening. Whereas throughout its long and distinguished history, Girl Scouts, the premier organization for and leading authority on girls, builds girls of courage, confidence, and character, who make the world a better place. And whereas, in partnership with nearly 11,000 adult volunteers, Girl Scouts of Western Ohio yearly serves 39,000 girl members. Now, that's a lot. They serve those members in 32 counties throughout Western Ohio and southeastern Indiana. And whereas through the Girl Scout leadership experience, girls develop the skills and lessons that will serve them a lifetime, so that they may contribute to their communities. And whereas, over 50 million women have enjoyed the benefits of this Girl Scout leadership experience as an American tradition for 109 years. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, Ohio, along with the entire city council, do hereby proclaim March 7th through March 13th, 2021, as Girl Scout Week in the City of Beaver Creek. Congratulations.
All right, so I am Susan Greenkemeyer, and I am one of the service unit managers for Girl Scouts in Beaver Creek. And we've got some girls here too that are important, so why don't you introduce yourselves?
I'm Haley.
Haley?
I'm, I'm from Troop 33335.
Great.
I'm Samantha, and I'm from Troop 35380.
And this is Anya. And Anya is from Troop 34501. And a couple of other really important people to recognize are Mrs. Nicolosi and Mrs. Beal, who are also Girl Scout leaders in our community. And I don't know, Mr. Bales, are you a Girl Scout too? There's a lot of them at your house, anyway.
There's a lot at my house.
Yeah, okay. Lots of volunteers. Girl Scouts is, Girl Scouts is a very well-represented organization in Beaver Creek. There are approximately 1,000 registered Girl Scouts in Beaver Creek. And those 1,000 registered Girl Scouts are really well-supported by local government. Thank you very much. Our local churches, our schools, our local businesses. This is a vibrant, wonderful place to do Girl Scouts, and we appreciate the proclamation, the idea that we get to celebrate Girl Scouts together now as a city, and that we can continue about the business of Girl Scouts. This has been a little bit of a challenging year, but I'm going to say challenging in a really great way, because out of those challenges have come some amazing new opportunities that we are definitely taking use of, just like Girl Scouts do, right? So thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Get ready, get together for that picture. Here, one, two, three. All right. One, two, three. All right. Oh, and Mrs. Garcia has some things for us.
Maybe we can separate them.
There's a new one.
Yes.
Yes, she has a brand new one.
Of course. All right, great, we will come back up and help.
You do see that, I have a hand.
I do see that, awesome.
All right, very good. Thank you very much.
Well, we have, we have a gift for everybody. We'll leave them here at the table, and you can pass them around.
Well, we appreciate that very much, too. Oh, boy, cookies, wow! Woo!
Do we have distribution?
They're going to fight over them now.
All right, we do have a very, an entertaining presentation for us here in just a second. Pete went back to get them out of the back room. They're coming in. And this is, this is the Lord of the Legos. And I'll say that again when they come on in. Come on in this way. Right over here, center stage, how about that? Very good. If you line up right across here, the camera over here will grab you. Okay?
Why are we using a camera?
Okay. Wow. Okay, who's going to, who's going to do the kickoff here?
I don't care.
Who's going to start things off for us today? Let's, let's line up in a row, let's get organized, come on. Line up and look back to the audience. All right. Now I think we've got a story to tell. Is that right?
Yeah.
All right, well, let's get her started.
We're a LEGO robotics team, and we don't just do Legos and robots and stuff. We also find a problem in our community and a way to solve it.
Next, are you finished? Go ahead. If you're not finished.
I just finished.
All right, then pass it on. Sorry, do it again, do it again.
Okay, we are a LEGO robotics team, and we don't just do Legos and robots, but we also find a problem in our community and a way to solve it.
Pass it on.
I am Jaden, the team captain.
I'm Kennedy, the assistant captain.
I'm Londa, the invasion captain.
I'm Taylor, the core values captain.
I'm Steven, the robot captain.
I'm Gabe.
I'm Ethan.
I'm James.
I'm Safron.
I'm Daniel.
And we are the Lords of the Legos.
You guys riding on horses isn't very active.
So it's a man who ain't on a staff all day.
You know, guys, being evil doesn't burn very much fat.
But being good does.
You know, we should make an active game, so you can do that instead of being evil.
Wrong franchise, bro!
What are you guys doing?
We are trying to make an active game for these lazy ringwraiths.
Hey, we're not lazy, um, are those the hobbits that we're looking for?
We are not the hobbits you are looking for.
We're not the hobbits that we're looking for.
Wink.
Did you just say wink?
Stop breaking the fourth wall.
Oh, fine.
Okay, uh, back to the game, what should we call it?
We should call it Lords and Hobbits. You rank?
No!
Okay, this is awkward, everyone stand up. Hey, aren't those the hobbits you're looking for?
No, they're not the hobbits that we're looking for.
While I was totally not used for all day, I heard you were making a game, tell me about this game.
Well, at CDC.gov, it says that one in four adults don't exercise, so our game should help fix this.
We're on Middle Earth as the CDC. Okay, enough of this, let's play this game.
This is how we play the game. First, we pick the lord.
I get to be the lord first.
Wait your turn, Sauron.
The ringwraith is going to be the lord first, you'll get to be the lord next, everyone gets to be the lord.
The lord will then randomly draw a black card.
The black card is the action card, which is the basic action all players can do.
Wait your turn, Sauron, we all get to be the lord, you'll be it next.
Everyone else randomly draws a white card, the challenge code for the action on the lord's code.
So the lord has Wolf Wiggles, and Sauron has on her white card, or on his white card.
I have wave your arms, so I would have to do the Wolf Wiggler while I'm waving my arms.
Oh! And I have rotating, so I have to do Wolf Wiggle while rotating.
The lord picks their favorite and gives them the black card, which is a point.
I give it to him because he did a sound, nothing.
And, and the person who has the most black cards at the end of the game, after everyone gets a turn to be the lord, wins. Wow, this is a great game, I love this game. And for eight people, it'll take about 30 minutes.
And after 19 minutes, you burn around 100 calories.
What's a calorie?
It's a thing only wizards know.
All right, then, keep your secrets, but according to USA.com, one of the 1.4 billion people worked out is something I know.
Well, thank you, my minions have now more actions.
Uh-oh, what have we done?
Those aren't the hobbits that we're looking for!
Boston, fly, wolf.
Okay.
Woo, 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 woo!
All right, that was quite a performance. It really was. Who's got the microphone? How about I retrieve that from you for a second? But yeah, that was fantastic. So what is, what's your next project? You know?
No idea, but we're going to plan that next year if we're ever going to do it.
Well, the next thing that our LEGO League Robotics that we have to do is, we are meeting with the judges, and we're going to do this exact same thing. And we have also sent in a robot run of our robot, we built a robot, robot out of Legos, and it has to complete certain missions on a board. And the board has certain fitness things, and here's our robot.
There you go, get that on camera.
Yeah.
Get it right back.
Yeah.
And we have a program to run, and it's, it's simple, put on the floor, but it's,
we use coding, and we have to program it, and we can't touch it. And so we get points for certain missions that we do. And this is not one of the missions, but here's just something that I made.
All right.
And I coded that, and so then we have to do this to the judges and talk to them about the robot and everything, so that's what our next project is.
Do you have some bad?
Also the judges, also the judges ask us questions, and parents are not supposed to talk during the debate. Look at you!
All right, now you guys, I would want to wish you all well at the state level, so thank you for being here this evening, and wish you all the best. All right. Take care. Well, you know, the, our future is within the young people and the, are with the young people, and so it was fun tonight to have everybody here that are young and going to be our leaders of tomorrow. So let's start the regular part of our meeting, and may we have a roll call, please? Here. 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 At this point, I'll turn it over to Councilmember Doerr for, please.
I'd like to invite the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts up to join me to lead the Fledge of Allegiance. Whatever you'd like to get started.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Want to stay standing there?
For today, I'd like to have a brief moment of silent prayer. It's been a tough year and almost a year to the day when the lockdown started in March of 2020. I've been reflecting upon lives lost in Beaver Creek, the families that are still mourning, those that have lost jobs and businesses. It's been a very, very challenging time, and so I'd like you all to join me in just a moment of silent prayer for all of us. Thank you all.
Okay, we have an agenda before us this evening, are there any changes? Move to approve the agenda, Your Honor. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same, motion carries. We have minutes to approve, first of the February 22nd, 2021, regular meeting minutes. Any changes? I have a motion. Move to approve. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from February 22nd, as submitted, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same, motion carries. And now we have a pre-scheduled presenter. And it looks like Tracy. Hello there. The president of GreenBucks.
Yes.
Please come up.
I'm Tracy, I'm the president of GreenBucks. We're a local chapter of, of Ambucks. We're celebrating in May our 30 years. I wanted to thank everyone that came Saturday, the 27th, to our Visibility Day, and we have some slides up. We donate these trikes to the children and to the veterans. These are pictures from the event on the 27th. We've given over 100 trikes to veterans and children over the years. They're all donated to the recipients, and we raise the money through fundraisers, donations, and grants. They provide therapeutic opportunities to increase mobility. The children get to work with their peer group and family interactions, and the vets, they get opportunities to be also with their peers and work out some other underlying issues. Again, we really wanted to thank you guys for coming and for supporting us, and for the public that came and supported us also. We're always looking for new members, so you can find GreenBucks on Facebook. Just wanted to say thanks to all of you.
Well, we thank you, it's, I think we get more out of it, those that are lucky enough to be able, have the time to attend, we get more out of it than you might think.
I hope so.
I mean, to see the smiles and the appreciation from the recipients of these bikes is just amazing.
Yeah, we couldn't do this without you guys, the, the community, the volunteers, the public, everyone that donates and comes out to help.
Absolutely. Keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
We certainly appreciate it.
All right.
All right. Any comments?
Anyone have any questions and comments?
Questions, comments?
Okay, all right, thanks.
No questions, but I just wanted to thank you for what you guys do. I mean, I've, I've been to the last couple and just watching the faces on these kids when they get their bikes, and even the veterans, you know, they're, they've got mobility now, and I think that's just a great thing.
It is amazing.
And we just thank you for everything that you guys do.
Thanks.
All right. Next, there is a ordinance resolution and PUDs, and we have one resolution, Resolution 21-09.
This is a resolution approving amendments to the bylaws of Miami Valley Risk Management Association.
We're letting the room clear here just a little bit, that's right. With COVID, we have to have a little traffic control. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council, sorry for the delay, waiting for the crowd to clear out today. Did you already read that? Oh, very good, I'm way behind. I just wanted to talk a little bit about Miami Valley Risk Management. I think there's some fun history behind this organization that I thought I would go over, because again, this was started in 1988, and we were one of the charter members of the six communities that got together and realized that a pool for insurance purposes would be beneficial to all of the members, and would again prevent us from having spikes in insurance based on claims and our experience individually. So again, they got together and pulled these six members together to form this pool that basically provides the property, general auto, cyber pollution, the coverages for the insurance that the city utilizes. And again, it was a tribute to those forward-thinking folks back in 1988 to start this all up. The membership has now grown to 21 members, so again, it's a lot of the cities in the, basically the general area, it goes as far as north as, I think it's all the way up to Troy and Sydney, and then covers some of the southern municipalities also. Again, the concept was to pool the risk, so again, no one member was exposed to certain issues going on, so again, tornadoes, that would have, if we would have been individually covered under that, it would have been a devastated increase for our insurance for those covered disasters, those type of things. Again, with the pool concept, they go in and decide whether or not, if it was a natural disaster, it doesn't hit your experience rate, so again, it doesn't create that spike in the insurance. And one of the things I think that they're most proud of is that we've paid since 1988 $2.36 million in premiums. And again, under the pool concept, after the three or four years of the statute of limitations for a claim, and all the claims are paid out, the pool actually refunds back to the members a portion of their premium contribution. And I'm happy to say that as a founding member, we've gotten $1.4 million back, almost 59%. 56%. 59% of the premium back from that pooling experience. So again, very beneficial for all the communities that joined, and again, for us being a member. That being said, every once in a while, the membership and the trustees, which we are a member, and the governing councils, review the amendments and the bylaws to the actual pool itself, and that's what you have before you. The last time it was done was 2002, so it's been a while, and we went through all of that, and in order for those bylaws to be updated, the trustees got together and we went through the entire bylaws and the amendments to the bylaws, and came up with a couple of changes. Most of them are grammatical, but they've kind of changed and evolved over the life of the pool, and they've decided to move some of the things that were, basically, that had to be approved by City Council and all the government entities to having the trustees vote on some of those provisions. The two that are the big ones are the pool contribution formula, which is an elaborate formula, but it basically just takes which is an elaborate formula, but it basically just takes what we have as far as the number of employees, the property values, number of police officers, it's separated out, the operating costs of the cities, and tries to determine what their contribution factor is. We've kind of pulled that out and said, really, the trustees can make that decision as to how that is developed and changes in the future. To be honest with you, it hasn't changed since the inception of the group, but they wanted to take that and segregate it out. And then also, the other thing was is the deductible, the current deductible for the members is $2,500 per incident, and it hasn't changed since I've been involved in this organization. And I don't expect it to change, but again, they decided that that would be better if, in the current market, if we had to change that, it would be faster to do it by the trustees versus going back to all the governing entities to have them approve this official act. So that's what you have before you. Again, a lot of the other ones are just changes that are updating kind of the insurance lingo and making those changes so that, again, we're current, with our current practices and procedures, so. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, you have all the changes. I gave you the red line version of the entire document. And again, we haven't done it in a while, but it seemed like it's still, pretty much everything applied even to this day. So again, founding fathers, which were, we were one of the six that did a good job setting it up and continues today.
Questions?
I actually just have one question. You addressed the two concerns that I had. My only question in relation to those is how often can those changes happen? Is it on an annual basis or just as a needed basis?
So now that they've been brought back into the policies and procedures that are voted on by the trustees, those have to be updated every year. So before the insurance premium is set for the upcoming year, the trustees need to determine whether or not that contribution factor is still okay, whether or not the deductible is okay, and then the type of insurance we have. Again, with this insurance, we have like three layers. One is the pool's self-insured. Then we have a secondary layer up to like $5 million, and then after that, it goes up to 12. So again, every year, the Finance Committee reviews all of that information before they set the current insurance rates for the pool.
Perfect. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good question.
Yeah, I have one, Mayor. I'm just wondering what kind of lead time we have in terms of a change to our contribution, to the pool contribution factor.
So again, what we do is the renewal on that is, it starts with our calendar year. So again, we're reviewing all of that information early on in the season, April, May. We get some preliminary reports, and then it gets finalized probably about the third quarter of the year for determining what that is. And the other reason, I'll just let you know that the reason why they wanted to get that changed was they're looking at right now determining whether or not they need to adjust some of the variables. So again, if I have a $5 million claim, it's a one-time event. That would go against my exposure. But if I had two, $2 million claims or $2.5 million claims, that would. So again, we're looking at it from the standpoint, is that a fair way of distributing out that risk and causing that premium to go up for that individual entity? Or should there be some dollar amounts? And that's kind of what they're working on right now with the strategic plan of the pool to say, in the future, is the current method that we're using right now adequate to address those issues? Or should we look at some other tweak to the formula to allow that to happen? So one year, we had a really bad year. We had a couple of lightning strikes at the police department. We had two sprinkler breaks at the golf course, and that all happened within one year. So again, we got credit for the one instance, but the other three affected us and our rates went up substantially for two or three years after that. So again, they're looking at that saying, well, what if we didn't have anything before then or after then? Was that appropriate to, you know, increase their and adjust their premium based on that history? So that's kind of what we're looking at.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, do I hear a motion?
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 21-09.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 21-09. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Next is liquor permit. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is a transfer of a liquor permit from what used to be under the ownership of Max's Sports and Spirits Incorporated to KT's Bar and Grill located at 3991 Dayton Xenia Road here in our city. And that's the Santa Fe Lounge by common name. The Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control sent us notification of this request for this transfer of liquor permit regarding a D1, D2, D3, D3A, and a D6 permit from Max's Sports and Spirits Incorporated to KT's Bar and Grill, again, located at 3991 Dayton Xenia Road. The record checks required by the Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control were conducted on the applicants, shareholders of this request, and the staff is recommending this application request move forward without comment.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept without comment.
I have a motion on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Next is a decision item, acceptance of fourth quarter financial summary.
Good evening again. You have the detailed report from the fourth quarter, which is the end of the year, for the financial statements for the city. I just wanted to go over a couple of high points related mostly to the pandemic. But just to show you the experience that we had because of the pandemic and a little bit because of the tornado, really. We actually, the property taxes that we received were about $435,000 less than we had budgeted. Again, that's a 2.3% decrease. And again, that one was basically the result of the valuations going down because of the tornado damage. It finally kicked into this particular year of our collection, and we knew this was going to happen. But again, it's always a, it just kind of got compounded a little bit from the pandemic and some of the other issues going on. But again, that was a fairly significant loss to the city and in particular, the general fund. The other issues that we experienced were interest rates, obviously. A year before, they were about 2.5. They ended up being at .2. And that caused a loss of about $217,000. So these things you could see start compounding. Hotel motel taxes during the stay-at-home order and the reduction in the travel reduced. You know, because again, our base location, the base was basically shut down. We lost another $200,000 there in revenue that basically goes into the general fund. Fuel taxes, which are, they increased the fuel tax rate, you remember, from the state debt. But again, this is a consumption tax, and even though they increased it, we hadn't anticipated a lot, receiving some more than we did with the reduction in consumption. We lost about $300,000 there. Then you get into the operating funds, the park and rec area. Again, couldn't have programs, stay-at-home orders. They lost about $200,000 in that particular area. And food and beverage, we all know that that was hit pretty hard. We basically shut that down for the rest of the year, and we lost about $350,000 there. So again, we, the net of those things, they sound a lot more than they are because, again, we were able to reduce some staffing. And obviously, the operating costs related to some of those items weren't there also. But again, you can see that it was probably about $1.2 million. We actually lost in revenue that we had budgeted for the year before the pandemic hit. On the bright side, the golf course did 30,000 rounds this year, which was, I think it's the third or fourth highest rounds that we've had in the history of the golf course. So that turned out to be good, and we did 4,000 more rounds. We did the previous year, which was pretty high also. And then again, as far as the offsets to some of those losses, we did start getting in some of the FEMA money from the tornado. We got a little bit of it in 2019, and we ended up getting a little bit more in 2020. We still have some money that is still waiting to come our way. Fortunately, the barn, Ziverton Bias Barn is the one that's holding it up now. They won't release those funds till that project is over, which we all know has been kind of a slow grind to get that finalized. So we're hoping that by the end of March, that we'll have the actual bid specs ready to go and then get some bids and have that issued by the middle of April. So that's good to know. And then again, everybody realizes that we did get some CARES funds that came in. You could pass the resolution, participating in that, and then also how to spend that money. And the key to that was is that it was a reimbursement for covering the public safety and health and welfare of the residents and our own staff. And one of the things that we spent on, quite a bit of capital on, was improving the air filtration systems in all the buildings. So again, we got the ionizers, the better filters, and improved the air quality at almost all the buildings. We got that completed. And then the other thing is that we went to the touchless facilities at all of the locations, including the park locations and the outside areas for the bike station there, that type of thing. So again, we ended up utilizing that money for improvement of the overall infrastructure of the city. So with that, that's the ups and downs of 2020. I'd be certainly happy to answer any specific questions you might have, but we came out okay, I guess.
Well, it's been a challenge financially, but it's been a challenge on keeping the books, I'm sure, as well. I mean, that's been quite a chore.
Yeah, and that's, I have to apologize for this being so late. But again, we had a lot of extenuating things, like the deadline to file all the CARES was the end of the year. And so again, it was kind of crazy about that. And then as soon as we got close to the books, they said, oh, by the way, you guys can extend your expenditures for another year. And we're like, well, it's too late now. But yeah, we did the best we could.
Well, thank, we thank you for that.
Thank you.
It's all on your shoulders for that.
Great job.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, do I hear a motion?
Move to accept the fourth quarter 2020 financial summary.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the fourth quarter 2020 financial summary. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Next is council time, and we'll mix it up just a little bit. Councilman Doer, would you like to start us off?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start by thanking Dave Dennis Dare Jeep for the commitment to the Dare program, for the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts that were here today, and in particular, Girl Scouts for the week, March the 7th to the 13th, and the Lords of the Legos group as well. When I see young people in action, I'm always very, very optimistic and for the, for our future, our city, for our country, for our world. So that was really fantastic to watch as well. I had the privilege of joining Mayor Stone and Councilman Kern for the groundbreaking of empowered community services. And so I thought that was a great event. Thank you, Mayor, for the invitation. Really good to see new businesses coming into Beaver Creek, to see existing businesses doing well. Really wonderful to see there. And then finally, I'd like to thank the road crews, who I've noticed have been busy paving potholes and doing some of the kind of more minor work around the city. But it's so vital in terms of helping people get to and from work and just having a great and livable city. So that work is not unnoticed. So thank you for the public's, public works. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bales?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I found tonight's meeting rather inspirational. The routine items of business were basically that routine, but the pre-scheduled items were great. Again, like Councilman Doer said, thanks to Dave Dennis, the Girl Scouts. I mean, Susan Greinkmeyer, she's a rock star organizing all those Girl Scout troops. My daughter loves the Girl Scouts. She sold 160-some boxes of cookies. I mean, it's crazy.
Wow.
But, yeah, right? Plenty of smores for you, Councilman.
All I want.
But anyway, the Lego League, all of that was just really cool to see tonight. And so I'm glad we were able to have a ton of people back in here. I liked it. I also want to welcome Katie Carrico to the staff. She's going to be a great addition to the organization, and I look forward to some fantastic communications from, from the city. Finally, I am going to be out of town at the next council meeting, so I would ask that I be excused. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Kern?
Thank you very much. Kind of want to echo some of the comments made by Councilmember Bales and Councilmember Doer. Certainly to recognize youth tonight. It was very, very exciting to see all of the energy, both in the Legos group and the, certainly recognizing the Girl Scouts for the numerous things that they've been involved in over all these years. And also, Katie, also echo comments. Welcome to the organization and certainly glad to have you. And we don't want to forget St. Patrick's Day. 3:30 to 5:00, the Senior Citizen Center. Pick up a meal. My family's from County Donegal where they eat them skins and all. So it's kind of a celebration. Looking forward to that day.
All right. Thank you for that. Councilmember Schultz?
Well, that's a little difficult to follow. Again, I don't want to be a broken record, but it was very inspirational. It was great to see the youth out tonight. And kind of what Councilmember Bales said, you know, these meetings sometimes get to just be very routine. So it's good to see what everyone's doing in the community, and it was just wonderful to have people back in chambers. No offense to my fellow council members, but I like to see the new faces. Additionally, I would like to recognize the Parks Department for another one of their great endeavors. They have now been hiding songbirds about the parks, so make sure that you're, stay tuned to their Facebook page. I think that I will be participating in this one. It was a little chilly for the snowflakes for me. But now that this weather is beautiful, I think it's a great time to get out and about and enjoy the parks that we have. That's all I have.
All right. Councilmember Garcia?
Ah, thank you. I appreciate that. I will just follow up with Mr. Kern and remind everyone that St. Patrick was Italian. So keep that in your mind as we get closer. So a couple updates tonight. Again, thank you to the Lord of Legos who came. I know a lot of people have been able to attend those first Lego competitions in the past. Vice Mayor Adams and I went, I think, the most recent round before they shut everything down. And these, these kids are phenomenal. They are so intelligent. It is, it blows my mind what they can do and what they can accomplish with these robots, as well as accomplishing and tackling issues in the, in the community, even if they don't know what the CDC is. They do a great job. Also, too, thank you to the Girl Scouts for coming. One of the things that was sad to hear is that they won't be doing the Gold Award presentation the way they typically do in the past. For those of you who don't know, the Gold Award is for, excuse me, girls who... The quote is, "A mark of a truly remarkable girl, proof not only that she can make a difference, but that she already has." And we have a number of young ladies in Beaver Creek, we had six this year, who are going to be getting the Gold Award. And just to say their names so that everyone gets a chance to recognize them. One is Caitlin Cook. Her project was entitled Bags of Hope. Chloe Fletcher, her project was entitled Food Through Keystone. Caroline Hawley, she did a library restoration project. Noel Masserelli, she did the Rust Nature Reserve Placcape project. Karina Ress did the Forge Your Own Trail project. And Catherine Ress did the Find Your Fearless project. And these are all projects that these girls find and create on their own and see through to the end. Really, really great stuff. Also, thank you for GreenBucks for having us attend. It was also really inspirational to see. The kids were also excited, as well as the vets, to get their bikes, so that was great. And then the last update is just from our monthly MVRPC meeting. I'm happy to say that I was reappointed to serve on the Executive Committee for MVRPC. So I was one of the representatives for Green County. That'll be good for the city. And one of the other things we discussed was the air quality and ride share program. So as part of MVRPC, they do receive funding from ODOT to reduce air pollution. They have a number of tips on their website, such as using public transit. And they also updated that to include the CDC guidelines to commute safely, avoiding idling your car while waiting, and then refueling in the evening, combine errands runs, just a number of different tips. They also do presentations and outreach to corporations. So if you're interested, you can always call them or email them or follow them on Facebook and Twitter. So that's it for me from MVRPC.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to be a broken record, but tonight was a fun meeting, I have to say. It really was. It was, it was nice to see the kids here. It was, it was nice to see the kids here. I always get, it's, it's special when they can come in here and we can see what our future is. And it's really interesting to me that they were able to do all these different projects, the Lord of Legos, or Lord of whatever they are, that is, and the Girl Scouts, they, they continued to do their projects even through the pandemic and they found ways to, to really do that. It's, it's just a shame that we can't do the Gold Award as normal. The first Lego competition, I don't know if they'll hold that or not, but as Councilman Garcia said, that was a really fun time. I truly enjoyed that, watching what these kids can do with those robots. They get into the ring and go back and forth. It's, it's an amazing thing to watch and the kids program at all. It's just, it's, and then the, the projects they work on in the, in the communities as well. Thank Green Bucks. I was very fortunate that I was able to attend that and see those bikes and trucks given out. I truly enjoy being a part of that and watching it, as I said earlier, the faces, they light up, they now, they can get out and move around. And I think that's just a wonderful thing. Katie, welcome. We're glad you're here. We look forward to a lot of good things from you and look forward to maybe sitting down and talking with you down the road. The other thing is on COVID vaccines, I've been involved with that with the Green County Board of Health for some time now. They're opening it up to 50 and over, starting this Thursday. They do have a new website that I know that Green County's had a lot of trouble for a while getting people signed up. Part of the reason for that is they had thousands of names on their site. They had to transfer on to the Ohio State, so they had to shut it down because they just couldn't keep up with all of it. And that's the new, the website. Thank you for putting that up there. I actually tried it today, got into it, and it's very, very simple to use. You go in there and if you're qualified, you put in your zip code and it tells you at least 20 different locations around you that you can sign up to get, get your shot. So I recommend that people go out and do it. I get that text from Green County every day and today we just had four new cases, no hospitalizations, no deaths, and that's, that's really good news. We'd like to see those numbers going down. In fact, the governor's actually said if the numbers continue to go down, we don't have to wear these anymore. So I'm happy to hear that. But thank you very much. That's all I have.
All right. Well, it has been, I'll repeat, it has been a fun evening to kick things off earlier tonight and it's, we're not back to normal, but we're starting to edge that way and we still got to be cautious. But the more interaction we can have with our community, the better off we are. And I had the privilege of, of issuing a proclamation to a 100-year-old earlier in the week. And this lady could run circles around me and it was just so much fun and so enjoyable to talk to her. We could not go inside to the facility that she was staying at at Brookdale, but the staff and this lovely lady came out and I was, unknownst to me that we were going to be outside, so I did not have a heavy coat on, but it was a little chilly, but we had a ball. And she just talked my ear off. She sent, her daughter sent me an ice card back and I'll pass it around if anybody wants to read it. It was a fun event, but that's just one of those little things that we haven't been able to do that make a difference, not in just the community and the people's lives, but in our lives, that we get to do what it is we're supposed to be doing and that's communicating with the public. As far as work end, the, we had the first OMA policing policy meeting that I disclosed to the committee at a previous meeting where we had our first meeting. And it was very interesting and that's as far as I'll go tonight. I also had a legislative roundtable with Senator Hackett and State Representative Lampton, which is just an update on some of the bills that are pending in the House and the Senate right now. Nothing really new to divulge, but the, but it's back, getting back to normal just a little bit. And so as long as we all be careful, be smart, we'll get through this and we'll be back to normal before we know it. So I want to thank everybody for joining us this evening and we will turn it over to the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted, I'll introduce Katie here officially in a moment, but I wanted to go ahead and give the reports so far. So construction updates, this is always a fun one. Ohio Department of Transportation, we put on our Facebook page, there are, there is much work that is happening. I would suggest that the link, if you see our Facebook page, I put the link to, out there to the ODOT alerts that gives a weekly update. There's a lot going on, so just be aware of that. So the bridge along Dayton-Zenia Road over at 675, the week of March 15th, the work will require closure of one lane in each direction of the bridge, but the bridge will still be operational both, both ways. On Dayton-Zenia, yeah, spring is getting around the corner, so work is going to be returning to that project the week of March 15th. So plans are to complete the work along the south side of the roadway and prepare for paving. Remember, these projects will go on through mid-year, so lot, lot more work still to do, but this is good news. Also, a seven-day closure of Dayton-Zenia Road between Forest Dell and Central will be necessary in order to prepare for the shifting of traffic to the south side of the roadway. The date of this closure is not yet to be determined, but we wanted to give a heads up to those that live around that Dayton-Zenia Road between Forest Dell and Central, that there will be a week closure of those roads, so just to be aware. One thing, got a permit, need a permit, when do you need a permit? You know, basically getting or replacing, you need a, for a fence, a shed, deck, pool or other structure on your property, you must first obtain a zoning permit from the City of Beaver Creek Planning and Development Department. You know, this, this happened just before COVID happened, that we started this online permit process, which really was great that we had this already in place by the time COVID hit, but we just wanted to remind everybody that this is still available. You don't, you can't, permits can be applied for in person at City Hall, but you can do it by mail or preferred online. Permits can be applied for online by using a permit center located at the city's website. So if you go on the city's website, you'll see Permit Center. And for, always for additional information, questions about zoning permits, contact City of Beaver Creek Planning and Development Department at 427-5512. And this was mentioned previously, thanks to Councilmember Schwartz, but March is here and the songbirds are all mixed up. Help the songbirds hidden throughout the city parks and scramble their song. So birds will be hidden in 10 of our city parks. Each bird will be singing a scrambled lyric. When you find all 10, unscramble their song and email it to parks@beavercreekoil.gov by March 29th to be entered into the drawings for $50 in park bucks. And follow the city's Facebook page for the hints of where, you know, we got 23 city parks, so we'll go be at 10, so they'll give you hints where to go and look. And I definitely agree with Councilmember Schwartz, it'll be a lot warmer this time than finding the snowflakes. That was a little cold. And, and another good excuse to get outside. And as Vice Mayor Adams mentioned, the, please, the vaccine registration, you know, get online, get your shot. I had, I posted this on the Facebook page of the city, so if you can't find it anywhere Facebook page, you can find it there. And I've already had comments, people said that they haven't been able to get in, on anywhere in weeks and they went right to this after they posted it, we posted it, and they got, immediately got signed up. So it, it is working. That's good, good news to hear. Last thing I wanted to mention is we get a lot of questions on our salt barn with the recent thing that happened with the weather and the low on salt. So how much salt does a salt barn hold? Answer, 5,000 tons. I know, I wondered like, how much wood could a woodchuck chuck or something, but how much salt does a salt barn hold? And it's 5,000 tons. So when we look back, we don't have the numbers yet for this season, but if you look back at the other seasons, the total usage of salt and tons, we didn't even use the total amount. But this year, we came 300 or so tons of running out and that's why we had to stop. So we, in essence, used more than 5,000 tons because once we started using it, after we got that shipment finally came in, we used that plus some. So you, you can see, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, six winters, we never even used our storage capacity of our salt barn. So did want, also want to say, as council is aware, that our budget process, we budgeted this year for 2021 to come up with plans, our whole salt barn area needs reconfigured plus a new salt barn. And it was already in the plans to review the salt barn, not only just the size, but the effectiveness, there are standards. So all that has already been budgeted for 2021 and hopefully probably for 2022, funding permits for us to get, you know, to fix the, the issues with the, that area of the salt, where the salt barn is, the entrances, how it works and flows, plus if, based on the recommendations, there's standards of sizes based on population, number of roads, miles and all that, if the size of the salt barn also needs adjusted, that we can do that at that time as well. But this was a common answer, so, a common question, so I thought I'd give you an answer for that. Katie, if you would, join me, please. So tonight, briefly before, sorry, we have one person that, Councilmember Garcia, we didn't get time to introduce to, but introduce to everybody and to the residents of Beaver Creek, this is Katie Carrico. Katie joined the team today, so first day on the job and she's already here late night. I asked her already in our last meeting if she was coming back tomorrow. She said yes, so I'm going to hold her to that. Katie joins us after working at WHIO TV NewsCenter 7 as a weekend anchor and a reporter during the week. So if you recognize her, once she unveils the mask, which you'll be able to do here in a minute, as she speaks to you here in a minute. But she's been a reporter during the week as well. So Katie was born in Atlanta, Georgia. She grew up in Knoxville, Tennessee area until she moved to Chillicothe, Ohio in high school. She graduated from EW Scripps School of Journalism at Ohio University, not quite Ohio State, but you know, we just, we're big Buckeye fans here. I didn't attend Ohio State either, I'm Wright State, so what do I have to, to knock that? But where she earned a bachelor's degree, a science degree in broadcast journalism with a minor in political science. During her college years, she interned at WSYX and WBNS in Columbus, Ohio. She also studied abroad in Germany and worked for the U.S. Soccer Team during the World Cup 2014 in Brazil. She started her career as a weekend anchor and reporter at WSAZ in Charleston, West Virginia, and she worked there at WVNS in Beckley, West Virginia as a morning anchor. And while working at the, in the mountain state, she earned many accolades, including Best Investigated Journalist, Best In Depth Report, and was recognized for Best Light Feature by the Associated Press of the Virginians. Did I get that right? Virginians. She is excited to start her new adventure outside the news industry without, with the city of Beaver Creek. When Katie's not working, she enjoys traveling and trying new foods, being with family and playing with her English Bulldog, Maggie. That's, I don't know if that gets too long with my, my Royce, my little five-pound Yorkie, but, but, so we were very excited, you know, when I interviewed her, Katie, Mr. Casera and Ms. Gould, we were the interview panel when we interviewed the candidates. Katie stood out very much with her background, with her ability to speak and really her ideas are really awesome. I think she's going to move the needle. You know, when I came, everything, all the social media was on life support. We resuscitated it, but it's still just barely breathing compared to what Katie's going to do. We have high hopes from cable access channel to social media to improvements in In Touch and other publications throughout the city. I think the residents are definitely going to see a increase in resident communication that's more clear, concise, and definitely more for professionals than what we've tried to provide to them. And have some fun doing it. I think she's, she, you can tell she loves doing this. And so without further ado, Ms. Katie Carrico.
All right.
Hi. So Pete did not warn me about this, so I don't have anything planned, but I just wanted to say that I'm really excited to be a part of this team. Again, it's my first day, so Pete and I went over a lot of big picture ideas, hadn't gotten to all the details yet, but we really have some exciting things that would like to be a part of. But overall, just excited to be here and, you know, work with you guys and if I can do anything to help you guys out and of course, the community. So yes, thanks so much for having me. It's nice to meet all of you.
Well, thank you. And we'll give you a couple of days to know where your office is, but then watch out because we're, we might show up. All right. At this time, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address council on any issue at all? Time for citizen comment. Would anyone like to address council? Please come forward. Seeing none, we will move on. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.